Okay, that clock is about three minutes slow. It's now seven o'clock and we're going to start our meeting. With the governor's COVID-19 orders, large assemblies in Lancaster County are not permitted in the green face that we are now in to include public meetings without proper social distancing and following CDC guidelines. Night's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I would like to encourage you to remain on the call, but to also go to the township website by Googling East Hemphill Township and to log into our Zoom meeting following instructions on our homepage. Night's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be heard clearly during the meeting, but those present and online, only one person at a time speaks and they must be recognized by the chairman. Any people speaking at the same time combined with background noise make meetings like this impossible to hear on Zoom. This rule will be strictly enforced. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized by the chairman. To be recognized with the chat function, you must either be a presenter who's on the agenda or a resident or business owner in East Hemphill Township who wishes to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. The request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak utilizing Zoom are simple. Request recognition by the chairman via chat to speak. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. After receiving recognition, speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone. For Zoom, any violation of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order and your microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for those attending in the meeting in person. All voting tonight will be done by roll call votes and sure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by the township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items of non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and be handled at a later meeting. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner of the township to speak. Misidentify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minutes purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendants. Comments limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed with the exception of public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. No action will be taken during the public comment period for non-agenda items with all issues referred to staff. We ask for your patience and understanding as we strive to continue serving the residents and business of this township while fully complying with social distancing requirements prescribed by our governor. Now we'll move on to our first agenda item. Please rise for a moment, sign us in the pledge. Now the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see it. First item of my business is we have a conditional use hearing. It's for 2260 Dairy Road, a digital billboard sign. I am going to turn this over to Mr. Beck real quick. Is this a continuance of a hearing that started at our last meeting? And Mr. Beck, if you can give us an update, it sounds like it's going to be postponed again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to let the board know that Mrs. Claudia Schenk is available on Zoom if there's any questions, but she has submitted and we have received a continuance request for her applicant Oak Tree Outdoor Advertising. They are requesting a continuance to the November 18th Supervisors Meeting. Staff has informed solicitor Susan Pfeifer. In her opinion, we didn't need to have the court reporter here. She said the minutes would suffice to take record of it and it just needs action from the board regarding the continuance.
Okay, I'll read the motion and we can talk to the board. So the motion within this conditional use hearing would be a motion to accept the applicant's request to continue the conditional use hearing to the November 18th, 2020 Supervisors Meeting. So that is the motion. Now is there any discussion of the board? Okay, then the chair will entertain a motion as read. Or motion.
Don't move.
Okay, motion Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a second from Mr. Weaver. Mrs. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. LaFever?
No.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, three to two to continue to the November 18th meeting. Next up we have is our consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion, so with that we'll open up the consent agenda to the floor. Sorry, anything that we need to discuss on the consent agenda?
Also, please note that I did remove the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. They're still under review.
I've seen no comments. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move.
Okay, motion Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. LaFever. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing. Next, we'll move on to action items. The first action item is under Development Services. It's for David R. Connor, Tennessee Drive, a sketch plan and preliminary plan waiver request and approval of preliminary plan waiver. Ms. Your Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Diane, change of plans. Could you bring up the sketch plan in the presentations for Mr. O'Connor? Thank you. Gentlemen, before you tonight is a sketch plan to justify a preliminary plan waiver for the development of the two vacant or undeveloped properties on Genoese. The property to the west has most of the access on Genoese, but does have an access off of Donerville. The proposal's for a one building materials storage facility with an outdoor storage on the adjacent lot. The name of the business is Ironstone Building Materials. They are not proposing any new road improvements, such new roads or anything like that. They're not phasing the project. There's any questions for the applicant, I'm sure they can answer it, but staff is in support of the preliminary plan waiver and respectfully requests the board to grant the approval of the waiver.
But for the benefit of everybody listening, that does not mean they're not going through land development process.
That is correct. They would still have to go through land, final land development approval. This waiver just grants them an easier path without having to go through preliminary plan approval. And since the project is not phased and doesn't include any new road improvements, this is the reason staff supports the request.
And something that we've granted in the past in some of our presentations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, open up to the board.
How routine is this approval? I mean, you say we routinely do it. Have we ever not done it? And I, I bring that up within the context of, of things that come down the pike. We seem to, some of these things, we seem to continue to just, just approve almost after a cursory review. And after a while, we get ourselves into a situation where, where we can't because we've done it for one applicant or we've done it for the last 100 applicants. We must do it for the, for the next one and the next one and the next one and we can't pull back. And I'm not saying that we need to not request this, but I, I would like to see maybe a little less routine action on these types of things. I mean, we have a, I mean, even the information that we have here, we have a sketch, sketch plan. There's no narrative of any kind. So it's almost, I, I just, I just think there's a lot of questions.
I would have a, just a quick question. Can you, Mr. Beck, just give us a quick overview and explanation of how the process works? So this is not a deemed approval, right? They are going to come back to us with a final plan that needs to be approved. It's no guarantee that we're going to approve it, correct?
That is correct.
So it's basically they're taking their chances. They're asking to go this route, which is not out of the ordinary, correct?
That is correct.
And different municipalities do this all the time, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And many times with a sketch plan versus preliminary versus final, a sketch and a preliminary have much the same information in it. So we've always been fairly sympathetic to people that desire to develop, to expedite the process when it is, seems prudent and meets the criteria. So like, like John was saying, there is no phasing, there is no, can't remember the rest of the list.
There's no phasing, there's no, no new roads being proposed. And just to, to clarify, Cindy, the sketch plan is normally something we only ask for. We don't require it. A sketch plan does not have to be engineered, could be as simple as a hand-drawn sketch and testimony. And I will, I will agree with Mr. Bennett. Normally, we get a little bit more information on the project, but in this instance, it's a storage and warehousing for the Ironstone Building Materials business that is currently located in West Hemphill on Hemplin Road. Staff did meet with Mr. O'Connor and his engineer twice to go over the plan. We did have some concerns in both meetings that they will need to address in final land development, mostly concerning the stormwater management and the screening and buffering from the residential properties to the west and the access that is currently still there along Donerville Road. We want to make sure that if the residential properties that abut that access are currently using it, that they will still be able to use it. Mr. O'Connor, as, as part of his presentation to the planning commission, has said that he is not planning on having any access off of Donerville Road. And through the final land development process, they'll enlighten us about whether they will close all that access or they will execute access easement agreements with the adjoining landowners. To answer your question, Mr. Bennett, we, yes, this seems like a routine thing for East Hemphill Township because there are quite a few projects that come through that ask for a preliminary plan waiver. But each project is reviewed by staff on a case-by-case basis. And most recently, there has been a project that did not get a preliminary plan waiver because of some of the issues with the project, most notably site distance, traffic and stormwater management. However, in this instance, the traffic is not going to rise to the level of a preliminary plan to do a traffic study or traffic impact study at that point in time. The stormwater management, as long as they can meet it in the final land development, is not something that we need to see as part of a preliminary plan. So with this project, we did not feel the need to pursue a preliminary plan with Ironstone Building Materials. We felt it was, I hate to use the word routine because that conveys the wrong message, but this is a fairly straightforward industrial supply, supply and warehousing project that we didn't feel the need to force the applicant to go through the preliminary plan process.
Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate that you've done the due diligence on the, on the project and it isn't this particular project that I've got an issue with.
I completely understand.
Okay.
I would like to have a bit more clarification. I believe I heard they do not intend access off of Donerville Road. Where would they have access?
Off of Genoese. If you-
That connect to Richardson or where else does it go? I'm a bit familiar with this site as to what it was 50 years ago or so, but not-
Yes, sir. It goes, when I say access, I mean direct access off of Donerville Road. The Genoese, they will still access the property off of Genoese via either Richardson or Donerville Road. Most, most likely it will come in off of Donerville since the business is located on the western side of Hemplin Road.
Might we classify this as a simple lot add-on or lot consolidation plan? Is that too simple?
No, they're actually not consolidating the lots.
It's difficult, it's difficult to see in the smaller details just exactly what they're planning, so. Okay, they're keeping two separate lots, it's just that they have an intention to develop them.
Yes, if, for more explanation, the property to the west or the larger property in the, the drawing that is displayed, that is going to be left as outdoor storage. The property to the southeast, the smaller property, that is going to be the building, the property with the building and some additional outside storage. The blue, the blue on the plan is actually the, the access, it's going to have a shared access for both properties. And in discussions with Mr. O'Connor and his engineer, it was asked why they aren't consolidating the lot or the lots, because it does leave them open to having to provide and screening for both lots and to ensure both lots meet independently the requirements of zoning and subdivision land development and stormwater management. At this point in time, Mr. O'Connor, he needs the, the building and the outdoor storage for his business, but he wants to leave the opportunity for any future expansion that may arise with his business.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion of the board at this point? Okay, seeing none, any comments from the audience? Anybody on Zoom, Mrs. Garber?
No one on Zoom.
And there's nobody here from that.
There, Mr. O'Connor, I believe is here.
Okay.
We have a well put together plan and then we had submitted that to the township. We've got our stormwater numbers pretty much figured out for what's going to go on with the site. And then the preliminary came up. You gotta really talk, oh, I get it, okay. You gotta be really into the-
It, it does come out, so if you don't want to bend-
So we had a well-designed plan and everything all taken care of and and we had submitted that through some discussions with the township and the planning department. And then that's what led into the waiver of preliminary plan. But once we get through this process, we're ready to submit our final plan pretty much right away.
And that's what we, that's why we grant these waivers, because it's a waste of money, to be honest with you, in most instances during preliminary plan approvals, so.
And we appreciate that. We appreciate the, the staff looking at the plan with us and getting together and finding the details and working through that.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, with that, then I will entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plan waiver for Ironstone Building Material Project per to provide sketch plan subject to the applicant providing a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the established preliminary plan application fee. Is our motion?
Don't move.
Okay, motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennett, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing. Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have 2701 State Road LLC, the Penn Dot Multimodal Transportation Fund, Plan Consistency and Support Letter, Authorization to Sign the Planning Consistency and Support Letter. Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if the board recalls back in September, you took action to authorize the signature of a community foundation multimodal transportation fund grant, planning consistency letter. This is akin to the same type of thing. Unfortunately, the developer did not have a good go-around with the first round of Penn Dot Multimodal Transportation Fund grants. We have not heard anything yet on the Commonwealth Financing Agency Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant, but they are making their second application to the Penn Dot Grant. This is simply a letter stating that the development and the improvements to State Road, which is the main purpose of the grant, is to get additional funds to support to their improvements to State Road, is that it is consistent from a planning perspective and the township offers its full support of the project. Staff is recommending the board authorize signatures of the letter and authorize staff to provide that to the developer for their Penn Dot application.
Okay, discussion of the board. Anybody from the audience here? I don't think we, there's nobody here from the applicant. I don't know if Ms. Schenk is doing double duty or anything.
Yeah, she's, she's off.
This is, yeah, this was handled by the Marissa Price and, and her firm, so I don't believe they're on. And staff didn't feel it necessary to have any representation since this is a straightforward request and we have been in support of previous grant applications.
Okay, so seeing no discussion, if anybody from the audience at this point? Okay, seeing none. Motion is support the 2701 State Road LLC application for a Penn Dot Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant and authorize the board chair and Mr. John Beck to sign and provide a planning consistency and support letter to the developer for the Penn Dot application. Is our motion?
Don't move.
Okay, motion from Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennett, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing. That layer, you will need to address that little tape of, so. I'm the person who's actually signing it. Okay, next up, we have the Hemphill High School Marching Band event. Is this one Mrs. Garber or who's going to be running with this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have the info for you.
Okay, where's yours?
Before you this evening is an approval for a special event hosted by the Hemphill Band Boosters on behalf of Hemphill School District Marching Band. Due to the limitations placed on sporting events and other special events by the governor's restrictions, the Hemphill Band Boosters are attempting to create some events that the marching band can interact with the community and still have the ability to use their skills and do presentations. So on October 24th, Saturday at 10:30 a.m., the Hemphill Marching Band would like to do a March-a-thon mini parade through the streets of Landisville that surround the school complex. You can see that map showing on your screen. We have worked both with Lieutenant Brubaker and myself, along with the president of the Band Boosters and the band director, to create a route that does not impact major traffic ways and allows them to work through the neighborhood streets. Notification has already been made by the Band Boosters in the hopes of your approval for this this evening. The parade route is less than two and a half miles, which should then last no more than 45 minutes to an hour from start at the high school to finish at the quad lot. So it would be staff's recommendation that the board approve Hemphill Band Boosters' application to utilize and provide traffic control on the associated roadways as listed for their March-a-thon mini parade in Landisville on October 24th. Staff also recommends that the board permit the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form for the roadways specified, including Mumaw Drive, Stanley Avenue, Bank Street, Hemphill Avenue, Farm Lane, Stanley Avenue, Emily Avenue, Anne Avenue, Cooper Avenue, Stanley Avenue, Lynn Avenue, Barber Street, Whistler Way, Kaufman Road, and again back to Mumaw Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Garber. Any discussion of the board? Anybody here from the school district?
They asked if they needed to attend, I told them they did not.
Okay, anything from the audience? Still gotta come up and say your name though. Yes, that's all they're doing is they're just going around and they're marching in the streets, playing their instruments. Saturday 24th at 10:30. So if anybody else wants to go and see it, it sounds like it's going to be a neat event. It's nice to give the band a chance to perform and they don't get to perform around people too much right now, so it's kind of important for them. Seeing no discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the Hemphill Band Boosters' application utilized and provide traffic control on identified roadways for their March-a-thon mini parade in Landisville on October 24th, 2020 at 10:30 and to authorize the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form for the identified roadways as specified in their application.
Don't move with a note of appreciation for them getting out and doing something.
Motion from Mr. LaFever, is there a second? And a second from the chair, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing. Wish them well, Mrs. Garber. Next up, we have the, let's see here, Recreation Authority Reauthorizing Blue Collar LLC Hospitality Lease, Ms. Switzer.
So the last meeting you had adopted or accepted the lease with Blue Collar Hospitality, which is one of the steps that the authority is moving forward with to lease the space to Blue Collar, the banquet facility at, at Four Seasons. As we're moving through this process, we're realizing that we have to address the liquor license in more depth. And what you see here before you is a change in item number 13, their liquor license parameters that are listed in the sublease. Since this is a municipal liquor license that the township holds for Four Seasons, there are special ways that we have to go about obtaining this agreement. So the actual sublease needed to be modified to reflect the fact that it's a concession management agreement, not just a concession like agreement. The concession agreement still has not been written in draft form, but when it is, we have to then submit it to LCB, get their approval before it gets final signature. But in the meantime, we wanted to move forward with the sublease so that Blue Collar could move forward with their renovation process.
Anything from the board, Mr. Beck?
The only question I have, should anything pertaining to the liquor license be included in the sublease? This would be a question for, for, for council.
It would be a question for council. It was written that way with it including in there, the liquor license is important to Blue Collar to have, so there probably should be some reference to what extent.
Well, I have no, there's, there's no issue with, with an agreement with Blue Collar, but now we're looking at sort of a management arrangement. And would, might it not be best to have that agreement outside of the, the, the sublease for the, for the property? That would, that would be my-
It will be a separate agreement.
It will be a separate agreement.
Yes, it's going to be a separate management agreement as opposed to a concession agreement, which we had before. So you'll have the, the sublease, what would you adopt at the last meeting was the ground lease, which was the extension of time from five to 10 years. And then the sublease was approved, which mentioned a concession agreement and then the concession agreement itself. So the existing concession agreement is null and void and we have to modify the sublease to reference the new version of the liquor license, which is the management portion of it. So it's really just one section in the entire lease that mentions about the liquor license.
Right, section 13.
Correct.
And our special counsel is the one that wrote this, or was it their counsel?
Mr. McRally wrote, our counsel. And we are probably going to go to a specialist in liquor licenses to write the concession or the management agreement.
That, that management agreement be coming to us at what point?
Probably in November.
And there is emergency in getting, in getting this done because they want to get moving on the renovations, so.
Correct.
I would add.
Okay, any other discussion of the board at this point? Okay, is there, there's nobody there from this group, right?
No.
Okay, any questions to the audience? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve the revised sublease between Blue Collar Hospitality LLC and the East Hemphill Recreation Authority and to authorize signature on the revised sublease agreement for sublease- for sublease of the Four Seasons Golf Course Banquet and Snack Bar Facilities as discussed.
So moved.
Okay, most from Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the eyes satisfied, nothing. Okay, next up, we have seven sixteen Centerville Road. Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty one authorization, authorizing the purchase of seven sixteen Centerville Road in connection with the Centerville Road widening project. Ms. Switzer, if you can do that and also give a little quick little update on the project.
Okay, so Centerville Road widening project, there were three properties that we needed to purchase to to move forward with the project. They're at the intersection of Marietta and Centerville. We purchased two of the properties. This is the third and last. This is an agreement. They want to go to to final settlement next week, so you have the resolution before you that authorizes the purchase. In terms of the project status, we've moved the let date or Penn dot has moved the let date to fall of this year. No, no, fall of next year, fall of next year. Forgot what season I'm in. Fall of next year with possible construction to begin in twenty. That's not right. Spring of next year. With possible construction starting in the fall of twenty twenty one. Moving across two construction periods.
And State Road is supposed to be done by summer of next year, right?
Correct. Is it September twenty one? Okay, so the let date is September twenty one. Beginning in twenty twenty two across twenty three. State Road will be finished substantially, at least finished in August of twenty two. Twenty one.
Twenty one.
Twenty one. The other two portions of State Road, the intersection at Yellow Goose, and of course, the State Road realignment for the hospital should be done by the end of the year. So we should all be smooth sailing going into the widening of Centerville.
Big picture is we're having one interchange worked on ahead of time.
Correct.
And not overlapping.
Correct.
Okay, so is there any discussion about this? Basically, it's a total take of the property.
Even though the resolution words taking, this is a negotiated settlement by our consultant and the owner?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
It's not eminent domain.
Yeah, we were fortunate this project, none of them are eminent domains.
Unfortunately, the way Penn dot words things, though, it's always a taking, whether it's amicable or by force, it's still taken.
Right.
This one's amicable.
Okay.
Is there any discussion by anybody in the audience? Mr. Root?
They went those two houses that are boarded up or?
Those are two we own already.
You own already. What was going on there?
Yeah, they that's gonna be a right turn lane. Right turn lane.
I don't understand.
That's that is going to be a right turn lane for the project. Yeah, so that's why there's.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have seen no one else. We have here, I'm looking here, the motion again is for seven sixteen Centerville Road, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty one, authorizing the purchase of seven sixteen Centerville Road in connection with the Centerville Road widening project. So is there a motion?
No move.
Okay, most from Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennet. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, glad to see that project keepin' moving.
Yeah.
Okay, next grant discussion. Next is the Penn dot multimodal transportation grant submission for Farmingdale Road authorization to submit the grant and signatures on the advertisement letters and grant documents, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty two. Ms. Switzer?
So this is in connection with the Farmingdale Long Term Project. We are seeking additional funding for that that work to be done, which we hope to have scheduled in spring of next year. It's probably a six month project. We did get money from the high associates for the crossings project. We will be using that money along with any money that we can gain from grants.
And where do we stand with the other roundabout with Community Way? Because we talked about we're starting to do, we're looking at doing projects up and down Good Drive now at this point.
The Community Way is is at this point is conceptual drawing that the has to get vetted through the Public Works Group, which will be happening next week.
But the big picture is we we're now at that point where we're just trying to get money for Good Drive, up and down Good Drive at this point.
That's not how this is where this is specifically for Farmingdale Road.
But that would allow us, if we get this monies, it will give us more monies to utilize somewhere else on Good Drive.
Sure, yep.
The big picture, which is right now, we're talking about just doing whatever grant monies we can get up and down Good Drive for road projects.
Right.
This just happens to be one of the tools to do that.
Correct.
Okay, any discussion of the board?
Just in the manager's report, you had indicated that the second HOP submission depend on, when did that happen?
That was done within the week, last week. It was submitted. So hopefully their second review have less comments and gain approval.
Any other discussion of the board? Okay, anybody in the audience? Okay, seeing none. Resolution is motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash thirty two, authorizing submission of Penn dot multimodal transportation fund grant application for the Farmingdale Road improvements and to authorize signature of advertisement letter and grant documents.
No move.
Okay, motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennet. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the eyes satisfied, nothing. Okay, next up, we have the zoning here hearing board appeal authorization to move forward to appeal the decision related to two one one Marietta Avenue. Ms. Switzer?
So staff was in attendance at the zoning, this zoning hearing board meeting for address twenty one eleven Marietta Avenue. And we expressed concerns regarding the process that was done and wanted further exploration, so we talked to the board and what we'd like to do, which is our only method, given the fact that it is a zoning hearing decision, is to appeal the decision so we can open up for further discussions with the zoning hearing board.
Okay, is there any discussions of the board? Okay, is there any discussion to all these? Yes, I was anticipating that, sir.
I just wanna know why. What what are students? No more children, all one bedroom apartments, there's all the criteria that you asked for and we didn't approve. So tell me why you need to appeal this because you need further discussion. I've spent a lot of money since that hearing that I was approved.
So what we're looking at is not necessarily your application. It was the process that was done by the zoning hearing board.
I did it every way it was supposed to be done.
We're not saying that there was an error done by the applicant. Nor is that the is the board in a position that they're against the process or your application. It was a process internally with the zoning hearing board that we question and need further clarification on.
Appeal the fact that I'm allowed to build these buildings?
That is our only method at this point because the zoning hearing board rendered their decision.
I mean, what did they do that wasn't correct?
Well, at this point, it's turning into a loss lawsuit of filing, and it really shouldn't be discussed at a public meeting.
Lawsuit of filing what?
Appealing the zoning hearing board decision.
I'm not filing a lawsuit.
It's not necessarily a lawsuit. It's appealing this zoning hearing board decision, which gets filed in the court system.
And who files that?
The Board of Supervisors, which is why it's on their agenda for this evening.
But but you can't tell me why you want to appeal it? I don't understand. Because you've changed the zoning of my property? I was sold. I was grandfathered because I applied beforehand.
Again, it does not have necessarily anything to do with your specific issue. I understand, understand, understand. But that that's the extent that I can explain it at this point in time. Until the board makes a decision on what they would like to do.
Makes no sense to me at all. I mean, I did everything the way it was supposed to be done. I got approved. Now I find out two months later that you're appealing it, and I only found out because I read it in the newspaper. Why wasn't I given a letter or something that says it was appealed? Stop spending money.
Again, the decision to appeal has not been made until this evening by the Board of Supervisors. We have a thirty day window in which to appeal.
I was approved August seventeenth.
The thirty day window starts when the decision is signed, I believe.
When it was delivered, which was September twenty fifth.
Correct, I looked it up. I'm building.
Ms. Cooper, they can't hear you on Zoom. If if you don't mind, the microphone has to be pretty close to the mouth.
Are you okay? Yeah, as long as you can hear yourself. Planning to build eight six hundred square foot, one bedroom apartments, high end, preliminary, primary for people at the hospital, the health campus to live in. These are in the backyard of my office building. I'm tearing down a barn to make it happen. And I have a right of way for the property next door, and nobody at the hearing objected to my reason or my zoning hearing. There was no objection from anyone.
Correct, I agree with you.
So of course, I'm dumbfounded because I'm trying to understand why it's being appealed. And the fact that you're saying it's because the zoning hearing board did something wrong affects me greatly. And I didn't file a lawsuit, so I don't know why it could potentially be something that should affect me. I think it needs to be dealt with internally, not affect me when I've invested a lot of money in this project.
So the zoning, the zoning hearing board is totally separate from the Board of Supervisors.
But you said that the supervisors have the right to overrule them or.
Not overrule, appeal the decision, just like any other applicant would.
And then what happens next? Let's say they vote to appeal the decision. Then what happens?
Then it gets filed with the court system. Everyone involved is put on notice.
Am I gonna read about it in the newspaper? Is that what my notice is gonna be?
I I no, there won't be a notice in the paper.
Okay, because that's how I found out about this hearing.
Ms. Cooper, this is, we really have very limited things that we can deal with with when the zoning hearing board makes a decision, especially the township considers it to be possible errors that occurred in the decision. It's not necessarily a reflection of you.
But it does affect me substantially.
I realize it does, but we have, we have to also look at things that called saying precedence and some other things that the board was doing with decisions. Ms. Switzer can send you what a copy of the information that is in this appeal. You can leave with it tonight. So you won't even have to wait for it. You don't have somebody make a copy of it for you.
Certainly, certainly.
So you can leave with it right now. It lays out what we consider to be the errors in the decision. It's not a reflection on you. But unfortunately, we are in a position where there's other people. It's once you establish a precedent on something, then other people can also come in on that same precedent.
But you've changed the zoning since then.
It has, it really has nothing to do with that that zoning law. It you read, we have to read it to understand the why we're going to appeal. And like I said, Mrs. Switzer can get you a copy of that. And certainly after tomorrow, after you read it, you can talk, talk with them. And I've never done this before myself, so this is new to me.
I've not do it the first time.
So I we 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 recognize the situation you're in. Our appeal is with our own zoning hearing board, not with you. You just unfortunately are the recipient of the disagreement between the township and the and the zoning hearing board. It's not with you personally. I know that doesn't make you feel any better.
No, it doesn't, because I've spent a lot of money, and I made the decision early on that I wasn't going to appeal their requirement for four more parking spaces. So I didn't think there would be an issue. I mean, why do I have thirty days to appeal, but then you have thirty days to appeal after my appeal period's done? I don't understand that. Why wouldn't your appeal period be the same appeal period as mine?
Ma'am, your appeal period starts when you receive the the official written decision, just as the townships. So your appeal period started, or any aggrieved person's appeal period started September twenty fifth.
I thought that was the end of my appeal period.
We we can get you a copy of it right now, and you can, if you want to sit there and read, and you can, we'll talk after the meeting with that.
Okay.
This is, this is something that we are gonna have to take action on right now, though.
Okay, I understand. I don't like it, but I understand.
And we'll and we'll get you a copy right away, too.
I appreciate that.
So with that, I think we've discussed, I really don't really want to open up the public comment at this point because it's a pending legal matter. So with that, the motion is authorize staff and the township solicitor to move forward with the appeal to zoning hearing board case two four one six, decision related to two one one Marietta Avenue. Is there a motion?
No move.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bennet, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the eyes satisfied, nothing. We'll get you that in a minute. That's the township zoning hearing board. Yes, sir. You gotta give your name. We we already know Mr. Root, but you gotta come up for it and give your name at least.
Harley Barrett, eleven oh three Country Place Drive.
Yes.
My question is, is the zoning hearing board appointed by the board?
Yes, they're appointed by the board.
Are they paid position?
No, they get stipend, but they're not paid.
And and this was never voted on before?
Zoning hearing boards are technically independent of the township. We might appoint them, but once we appoint them, it's just like a Supreme Court justice in the in the Senate. They might appoint a Supreme Court justice, but you don't have any control over their saying and do. The same thing occurs with the zoning hearing board. So our only means if we disagree with the process the zoning hearing board did with an application is to file an appeal of application.
There was, this was never taken up for a vote by the board?
Not by us, no. By the zoning hearing board, yes, but not by the Board of Supervisors.
But anything they approve, you have to vote on to approve.
No.
You don't.
It's only if we disagree with the decision that they make that we have this this any process we have. It's called the appeal process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I believe that is the end of our action items.
I I do have one more, which was pointed out to me. It's up to the board if they choose to take action on it. It has to do with the authorization to advertise for the rezoning request for twenty six fifty five Harrisburg Avenue. We have tentatively scheduled that for November eighteenth. And we would need authorization to advertise to meet the filing, the advertising deadlines. It is not on your agenda.
Is this to advertise a rezoning request?
Advertise a rezoning request.
What would happen if we wait one meeting?
Then everything gets pushed back till second meeting in December, or first meeting in December.
Is this our area error, or was this a last minute applicant?
It was the last, last minute.
I would prefer something that's related to zoning that we not do that.
Got it.
Unless there unless it was our error, unless anybody in the board disagrees with that.
I'm not hearing, but I think I'm hearing that we would prefer until we have a chance to look at it more.
Well, it's just the request to advertise, but what I'm saying is we just have in our agenda at our next meeting.
I'm not even sure where the location is.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. We're, I'm just saying that it wasn't, it wasn't there on our end and something whenever it involves zoning, I think that should be eventually on the agenda for advertisement before we take action on anything, so.
No problem.
Okay, so we'll move on to old businesses. Are any old businesses? There's nothing on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. New business? There's nothing on the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added on a new business? Okay, Traffic Commission report, Mr. LaFever.
Yes, the Traffic Com-
Yes, the Traffic Commission met this evening, and we looked at more in-depth about the Shank Mill Bridge matter. There have been some relocation of signs on Stony Battery to give truck drivers a more advanced notice of the limitations of that road, not the road so much as the, the bridge itself. And we talked also about a condition on Nisley Road where some speeding on the downslope northbound is a concern. And we moved to request McMahon Associates to do a preliminary study of how we might try to control the speed on that portion of Nisley Road. And that was pretty much the essence of the Traffic Commission.
Okay, any discussion on Traffic Commission? Okay, seeing none. Manager's report and board report out. Ms. Switzer?
So the, just an update on the Holland Street Bridge project I had there on the weekend of, of October 30. They are actually going to start that, Diane, help me out, next week for Holland Street.
Correct, the utility work is occurring this week as night work. Next week, the site work will be Monday through Friday night work.
So the bridge should be down by the 30th. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Because by next year, it'd probably be falling down the tracks.
I did want to introduce you to our newest employee at the township. She's replacing Cindy Morris, who was our HR administrator, Betsy Schiffler. She's in the back of the room. She started on the 12th of October, and she's working out quite well. And as I indicated in my manager's report, a new policy that I'd like to initiate is that any full-time employees come to a board meeting. So you can meet them as well as they can understand what it's all about.
I appreciate that. Communication's a wonderful thing.
I have nothing else from my report unless you have questions.
We'll go to our group reports, planning. Well, I'll take it since I was, Mr. Wigglesworth and I in the plan group met. The biggest thing that we talked about in the plan group was Dutch Valley Auto Works. The owner showed up at the meeting at our request. He asked, had a long discussion about why he withdrew his plans, kind of cleared the air a little bit about sidewalks with him and why, what deferral means. Gave him a very good comfort level, and he will be basically re-withdrawing his requests to withdraw plans and be moving forward with this project. From a financial perspective, he was more interested in starting this next year, and so he was going to withdraw for that reason. We pointed out to him that he gets plan approval, and then he's got a number of years that he can wait until his finances come in place, and it'd be better for him not to go through the whole process again. So very good meeting. He seemed very happy after he got done meeting with us. And again, it was just more of a, a little bit of a communication issue and a little bit of a misunderstanding, and a little bit of not clear guidance he got from his consultant. So we were able to rectify all that.
Thank you.
I mentioned our meeting today? Yeah, we'll get that. And then, remember, is there anything else? What else did we talk about in planning? I'm sorry, Mr. Beck?
There was discussion on the Steinman Foundation Little Conestoga Trail. And. Oh, my goodness.
Rezoning of the running, the Hurley?
That's correct. A request was brought to staff to see whether the township would be supportive of a rezoning of the property that Hurley Industry owned, Hurley Industries currently owns is trying to sell off of Running Pump Road.
And that was the rezon to residential?
Correct, from enterprise to essentially low-density residential.
And that basically was kind of implied would not be a good idea.
There is, there will be continued discussions on that at the request of the owner.
So more to come.
Did I, did I hear Mr. Beck talking about the stream restoration work on the, has anyone done a mathematical calculation of East Hempfield Township proportionate part of the $14 million?
At this point, no.
Just, I suggest we do that, because I believe without knowledge of our proportionate percentage, it's going to be significant.
It, it's, it's difficult at this point to delve into the financial means of how this project is going to occur. The foundation is fully supporting it at this point in time, and they are actively and strongly seeking grants and funding sources to get a major portion of that paid for through the state funds. Now, where that all plays out, then we'll determine who has to pay what, or what percentages of what are being asked from municipalities, and there's four of us.
I guess my concern is in any way we would be thought to be committing to something that we might in fact have real second thoughts about whether we can afford it or not. I understand we might have some Emma's Four benefits and all those factors, but it's very expensive. And going into what we have for next year on the budget and forthcoming beyond that, I have a concern, and I'm just, just don't think we should be in any way giving an indication that we're on board.
Well, at this point, it, it's really just planning and getting organized. Steinman has put the plan together, funded it. They are now seeking funds for the design and engineering of the project, which they anticipate at 1 million. They're guessing at the 14 million because it hasn't been designed yet. Steinman also can't afford $14 million for this project. So that's going to be a hard question to answer of all four, five parties involved as we move forward. At this point in time, the only thing that's being asked of us is signing an MOU, which will aid in paying for the design and engineering, which is anticipated at 1 million. The Steinman Foundation is willing to put up 500,000 of that. 300,000, I believe, is coming from other sources. They are eventually looking at the four municipalities for 75,000 for next year's budget.
I hear you. I hope you hear me.
I do.
We are all on the same page. We're not taking on a multimillion-dollar project.
Nope.
Agreed. And Mr. LaFever, I would just echo what the chairman said and also add to it. The Steinman Foundation is well aware that cost is going to be a big factor in this, and they understand the work that they have cut out in front of them. So they are aware of your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then the other thing, we had a finance admin. Mr. Bennett, you want to talk about that?
Yes, we met this afternoon with Mr. Robinson and Ms. Switzer, and we discussed, we, we took a cursory look at the budget for next year and beyond. Those documents are in front of you to review before our next meeting next week. We believe that what we're asking for next year in, in the way of a budget is certainly, certainly reasonable, and within the limitations that we're, that we have from a funding standpoint.
And we'll, we'll go a lot more next week into depth with the workshop, but right now, when we were originally projecting financial hits of about 20% with the earned income tax, we're actually looking at a much more manageable 3% drop in revenue for the year. So it's not, not quite as dire as it was, and we are going to be projecting a soft revenue for next year to. But that can be a lot more discussed for the next meeting. There's not really any surprises. They're just going to be talking about the trash hauler fee and what to set that at, and particular discussion about continuing to pay the additional monies on our MMO as another item, and then just going through the usual budget workshop process that we get through.
And that, and that budget meeting is scheduled for the 28th, right?
28th at 4:30.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other group reports that we missed?
Just like to mention that the Hempfield Area Fire Commission met last night, and we finally got through a few concerns about job description, and we will be advertising now for the chief fire official. So it was good news, and we're moving forward.
Heat speeds fully onboard at this point, then?
They're onboard.
Okay, so no more board group reports. I will backtrack because the plan copy of the agenda, I don't have this item, but on the.
Yes, sorry.
Online agenda, we have our Development Services, Mr. Beck, if you can quickly, very briefly give us a rundown.
Yes, sir. Since the last meeting, the traffic light for Lidl is fully operational. Lidl is receiving their temporary certificate of occupancy to open up, and, or I should say, to have people enter the building to prepare for their opening. They are still moving forward and still planning and bringing everything together for their grand opening November 18th through the 22nd. Work has started to occur on Lime Spring Villages, which is the project on Marietta Avenue, south, on the south side across from St. Leo's. They, the developer is moving things forward to get the plans recorded, the agreements recorded, and we should see more work occurring on that project in the very near future. The heat and control plan has been recorded, and they are fully involved in site work of that project, which is at the corner of Running Pump Road and Knoll Drive. 71 Stony, 791 Stony Battery Road is still trying to answer, or address some key issues for their MPDS permit with the EP, and we are looking to bring that back before the board, either the November, the 2nd November meeting or the 1st December meeting. We just received word that Community Fellowship Church, as part of their land development plan that was recently approved and recorded, they have scheduled a pre-construction meeting to occur within the next two weeks. And the, the construction activity for the Stonegate Stream Bank Restoration Project has begun. They started to stockpile stone on the property in anticipation of construction occurring. And this concludes my report.
Any discussion of the board?
Just a question on the Lime Spring Villages on Marietta Avenue. Has all the approvals taken place on the intersection and traffic, traffic light there? And when, and when would that be? When will work start on that? Any idea?
They have not given me a firm date, but they, they have said everything is approved, and they should be starting work on that very soon. I'm not quite sure the exact date, but we could see the traffic signal begin to be installed by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion of the board? Okay, seeing none. We'll now move on to public comment, read over the rules. Is there any public comment at this point? Garber, is there anybody in Zoom that has public comment?
There is no public on.
Okay, seeing none. So with that, we are.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to request a short executive session of the board following this meeting to deal with a matter of litigation before the township.
Okay, that's fine. Right now, we are now going to adjourn the meeting by my phone. It is 8:04 at night. We are going to go in the executive session and not return, and nothing will be deliberated on. Thank you.